We now call the order of the items from the public. Bearing none, the motion to approve the agenda for March 14th.
I'd like to move that we approve the agenda for March the 14th, 2024.
Then properly moved, I need a second.
Second.
Properly moved, a second, all in favor, please say aye, please.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
That was a struggle.
Everybody ready to go? Are we okay?
I was passing a paper.
It's important.
Two things at once, that's tough.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Do we have any questions on the purchase log? No internal budget revisions, Mr. Wine?
No, sir.
Very good. We do have a change of status, new hire recommendation received from the Honorable Tony Patruci for Rose Carl and the Kiona Puller as part-time deputy clerks with an hourly rate of 1946 effective March 18th, 2024. New hire recommendation received from Gary Wine, county administrator, for Aleah Tucker as an executive assistant with an annual salary of $58,000 effective April 8th, 2024. We have a new hire recommendation received from Will Lawrenceon, fiduciary supervisor for Tanya Beddinger as a fiduciary coordinator with an annual salary of $46,000, that's effective March 8th, 2024. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Katie Del Gietti for Alex Glover as an assistant prosecuting attorney with an annual salary of $75,000 effective August the 5th, 2024. And with that, I'd like to have a motion to pull that, the money was set aside in contingencies in this budget year, I'd like to have a motion to remove that money from contingency and placed in her budget.
With the prosecuting attorney.
Yeah, for an amount of $75,000.
Plus benefits, $75,000 plus benefits.
Yes, plus benefits, thank you.
A second, Ted.
You're properly moved, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Could you tell me a little bit about Aleah Tucker?
What you want to know?
The issue?
She's a, she's a, she's a person that works in the Berryville area, she's a...
Berryville area?
Berryville area. She is a heavily involved in human resources and administrative functions for the organization she works for now. When, when we go through these processes, we had 100-plus applicants.
Really?
We interviewed eight, of that eight, two have been placed in the organization, Aleah being one of them, another one you just placed in fiduciary that we struggled to find for the past any year. And there are two more applicants that were in that group that would be wonderful assets to the organization, so we're, it was a great recruitment process. So I think, I think Aleah will be a great addition to our team and looking forward to it. Just, just to show you the caliber of employee she is, she agreed to a start date of April 1st. She went to her employer and her employer said, could you give us another week? She called back and said, I hope this doesn't jeopardize my position, but I, I feel like I really would like to give them one more week, but if I, if you can't, I don't want to leave. So, you're someone that had a new job that said, hey, her employer said, could you give us three weeks' notice instead of two, and she said, gladly.
What are we going to do with her?
Out her in the closet, is that what you mean, or what, sir? I don't know.
Well, what responsibilities will she have?
Support Chad and I, 100%. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I have a letter of resignation received from IT from Allison Buchanan effective March 22nd, 2024. Letter resignation received from the Sheriff's Department for Clerk Yoder effective March 12th, 2024. Have the approval of the minutes which we'll need to pull out. Commissioner Boyd was not present, but...
He's not here.
Right. So, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes for February 15th.
I make that motion to approve the minutes for February 15th, 2024.
And I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have a bond reduction for Macy's Martinsburg Distribution Center, which was a major planned change, file number 2311, dice 366 tied to double zero five, 21.
Doug, was that a addition, or was that just changed within the existing?
Both, combination of both. Thank you. 2110, dice 398, and number 2206, dice 0196, a grading bond. Number 285070367, that's engineering requesting that. Also bond reduction on McCauley Crossing Town Homes Phase 5, lots 144 through 212, BCP 2304, dice 132 tied to number 2304, dice 104, 2008, dice 101, and 53, dice 03. Bond number 017248228, and that's engineering requesting that as well. Another bond reduction for McCauley Crossing Town Homes Phase 4, lots 85 through 143, BCP 2304, dice 132 tied to 2304, dice 139, 2008, 201, and 53, dice 3. Bond number 017245590, and the engineering department is also requesting that. Let me get called up here.
And that is exactly where?
That's in Bunker Hill on Runnymede Road.
Runnymede, yeah.
Yes.
Runnymede Road, yeah.
In relation to this, you know if the governor signed the bill for taking this earning off the...
As of right now, he has not.
Okay, we have a stop payment check request from the county clerk's finance office. That's an amount of $4,200 to Bell Bright. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still move.
Then properly moved?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Mr. Hess, our honorable assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I got 11 personal property exonerations I had to bring to you today. Part of these are, as you know, we're scanning all of our personal property stuff in the system so we can get rid of all those retrievers and all those files. So some of these came from, from catching as we proof, as we go through that scanning process, but, in a way, we got a total of 11. And for the reasons that's listed there, they total up to, all 11 of them, $3,503.45.
Made a motion to approve the 11 personal property exonerations?
Still move. Second.
Properly moved, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Hey, board of meeting reports, Boyd?
Yes, sir, had a couple meetings this week. At the Roundhouse Foundation on Tuesday, and talked about fundraisers coming up, the big outdoor expo in September, we're working on getting vendors there, brainstormed a few ideas and putting together assignments to different people on the board to reach out to more vendors. We have, we have some signed up at this point. A lot of arts and craft vendors, not as many sportsman vendors as we'd like to see just yet. Still looking for sponsorships as well. We also discussed the trolley that the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority right now is in possession of. Years ago, there's a lease between us and them for that trolley, and no longer is anyone on their board who was on there when we leased it to them. So, there's a little discrepancy there, they think they own it, so we're trying to get to the bottom of that and work it out. I mean, I'm the one who signed it, so I know we owned it to them, but, so that's a little bit of a mess, we discussed that, we're working on that. And then Roundhouse meeting yesterday, biggest news out of there is, we, you know, the budget got passed and the money has come through, or is on its way in, it's approved, so we got $750,000 coming from Joe Manchin to button up that building and get the farmers market stuff rolling there, so that's great news.
That'd go a long way for...
That'll go a long way, we'll get the, get the concrete in there downstairs, get the doors, the fire doors done, and be able to hopefully maybe get a little bit of, we'll get new lighting in that building, electric's just been upgraded and finished, that, that just got done in there. HVAC was back yesterday, starting to work to finish that up. Elevator and steps are almost complete, they're looking great, the railing's going up around the steps going up to the second floor, the doors are in, next will be the elevator going in the shaft, that, that project's moving right along. Also met over there with the home show people the other day, went over everything for that, the home show's coming up quickly, that's there in the 1st of April, I think we're all set, set for that. And to get confirmation that the city will help us with the stormwater fees down there.
Good.
That, that was a big plus on that side, so, good things happening down there, rolling along, finally getting towards some, hopefully soon, operations, you know, we still got to find a way to get, and, and maybe we'll have enough left over with that 750 to get the third set of steps we need there upstairs, but I won't know until we start bidding some of the stuff out to see where that is.
Good.
Yep.
Mr. Bonhardt?
Thank you, Mr. President, had a public service water district meeting under items from the public. Uh, had a public service water district meeting, um, under items from the public. Some people there from the woods concerned about, uh, let me see, fire protection. And that is not really a possibility of upgrading the water system to put fire protection in there because that would involve storage improvements and water line improvements. And that's a little beyond the capacity of the district to do all that. Uh, they're, of course, still working on, they are working on, uh, increasing storage and maybe drilling a new well to improve the, the water system quality and quantity for residential use, but not for fire flows.
I think that fire require, hydrant requires an eight inch line.
Yeah, and they, yeah, that's beyond the capacity of the water district to provide that. Uh, they bid opening for a mid-sized dump truck, and then they had one, uh, bid for a twenty-twenty-five Kenworth for some total of two hundred and six thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, they, um, approved alternate, uh, extension agreement for Oak Leaf Meadows, which is on Sulphur Spring Road for a hundred and forty-seven single-family houses. Uh, they also did a, uh, approved a long service line. There's two lots in Middle Creek Manor. They're off of Shiley Road that they will permit them to put a long service line in. And the, um, replacement of the water main extension into the youth fairgrounds is starting. I believe they delivered materials the other day, and Jim, I think, unloaded them yesterday for today. I'm not sure what. And, uh, then also had a Telemont meeting yesterday, and that was pretty much routine. Thank you.
Mr. Kellid?
Uh, back to appropriations from the federal government. Keith McIntosh reached out to us, and, um, appropriations were also approved for Inwood Park, the development of Inwood Park. Um, our, our request was initially one point two five million, and he mentioned to me that it was approved at one point one two five, which, uh, not complaining a whole lot, but it's a little less, a hundred and twenty-five thousand less than the, but still. And, and as far as appropriations, I want to say this, uh, when they take those, both senators from each state reach out for requests. And so they only honor each state, and it's a combination of Senator Manchin and Senator Capito, both who jointly approve these appropriations. So we need to give credit to Senator Capito as well, so. But the hope is, obviously for us, is, is that this is enough money to get us started where we can start maybe moving dirt up there once the money's received and, and actually get the project started, which in itself will create a lot of enthusiasm and hopefully will lead to some potential donors and things to, uh, help us accomplish our goal of completing that park over the next several years. Uh, in regard to the youth fair waterland project, the materials did come, uh, Jim did unload those. Uh, the easement work has been completed now. We only had one private property, Scott Pucko Lang. He was very, uh, panned and had no objections whatsoever. And then, of course, they have to do the easement on the youth fair property as well. Uh, actually, on, uh, this coming Monday at two P M., there's going to be a meeting on site on location to start putting together with all the players the actual work and starting the actual installation and digging of the trench and the installation of the line. So I, I feel very confident that this thing could be wrapped up by sometime, uh, before the end of this fiscal year, maybe in May or June, so.
Oh, it's amazing how many groups they've pulled together.
Quite a few.
Yeah.
And, uh, also, uh, I wanted to update you that P O parking, P O Faulkner parking lot thing is being striped. There was a little bit of a confusion there, and to be perfectly honest about it, the plan that was given to the bidders, uh, was not, uh, workable. And so the work had started and it had to be stopped, but the corrections have been made now to, uh, give the proper spacing, uh, to create a good flow of traffic within the parking area, and it should be completed this week. So it's, it's good to see that project come to fruition, and hopefully that includes the exit aid on our property. There'll be landage, lands installed there to get people in and out of the facility from up the state circle, which has never been a legal entrance before, will now become that.
I guess they're coordinating that with the City of Martinsburg for all the signage and all that kind of stuff.
Yes. Uh, and, um, the, the street that we thought would maybe become two-way to, uh, is going to stay a one-way street because of with. But entrance and exits there, it's off the state circle. Uh, I don't think that's going to be an issue at all, and the traffic flow should work very well. I'll put it this way, it would be much better than it has been in the past, so.
Kind of a free-for-all in the past.
It has been, and people illegally turning into the parking lot from that area, which they really should not have. And, uh, the, I had a farmland protection meeting on Monday night. Uh, it's in your, uh, read ahead, that Brad Langdon, who has been on there seven years and, uh, some few months, is resigning. His term doesn't actually expire until later this fall. So, uh, according to their bylaws, we'll have the responsibility of replacing somebody to finish his unexpired term. Um, the usual term for the farmland is a four-year, uh, term, and you're allowed to run, uh, be on there two consecutive terms. Um, I wanted to say to you yesterday that myself, Eddie, Gary, and Matt Umstead met with, uh, Pat Murphy, Jackie Long, Ron Stevens from the Board of Ed. We had a very lengthy discussion about the, uh, property down on, uh, nine oh one, which is the ten acres that they own that is going to become a public park. Uh, there's a strong interest to work with the Civil War Battlefield Foundation, not only make it a public park, but to make this the first ever Berkeley County recognized battlefield location. And it'll be known as Hoax Run Battlefield. Uh, quite a histories of that story. And we requested in that meeting that they approve idling that property over to the county so that we can work with the Civil War Battlefield Foundation to make this a reality, and they seemed very receptive to it. Of course, they have to get it approved by their full board, which the next chance of that, to discuss this, will be their first meeting in April. So we expect hopefully some good news there, and we can move forward with this. Other than that, uh, that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, on Monday, Gary and I met with Jennifer Smith from the Development Authority in a phone conference with John Stump. Uh, there's some questions on the South Tiff. So these Tiff districts have generated a lot of interest, uh, really on the north end and the south end already. And that's exactly what they were intended to do, to be able to help, uh, with infrastructure costs. Uh, so, so those are really positive things. Uh, the L A P C met on Tuesday. It was a pretty light agenda. They are preparing for exercises, uh, on April fifth, and then a full-scale exercise on June the sixth. Uh, I just, I think I've probably mentioned this before, but I want to, uh, thank Randy and Sean and Candy for building that coalition. That's really a strong group now. Uh, before, it was sporadic. Uh, but they've, they've really developed a, a good working group there, and that's, uh, that's a, that's a real positive thing as well. And then, of course, yesterday, had a development authority meeting. You know, they continue to have, uh, interest. Jennifer's continuing to show in properties, uh, throughout the county. And, um, have a fireboard meeting tonight at six-thirty. Mr. Go ahead.
Uh, I, I, I also wanted to mention back to the battlefield situation that we've been in great conversation over the last few, over the last few weeks with Roberta Walters, who owns the Falling Waters property on the river and the falls itself. And she is still, at this point in time, not ready to sell the property, but she's very interested in leasing the property. And Matt and, uh, Gary and I have been working with the Battlefield Foundation, uh, getting them the appropriate information and contact. They're going to hopefully work out a lease agreement themselves with Mrs. Walters. And hopefully, within that lease agreement, they're going to be able to put a, uh, right of first refusal on the property when it goes, if, if and when it goes for sale. So this is all good news in that respect. Uh, the other thing, back to the battlefield situation on nine oh one, of course, the park board is developing that property. And Eddie and I are meeting on Monday with a couple of the park board members and their new, uh, executive director to talk about the nine oh one and the impact it'll have, working together with them to get their approval to move forward with this battlefield site as well. So we'll, we'll hopefully get that resolved. And, and we've already had some initial conversation, one-on-one with some of those folks, and, and everything seems to be favorable in that direction, so.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to, I want to thank, uh, former commissioner on the Farmland Protection Board, Brad Langdon, for his, uh, long and faithful service to that board. I know he's a very dedicated, uh, board member on that farmland protection. Also, we did receive a new application for, uh, farmland protection from Doug Leather. Um, would you like to bring him in for?
Have the interview, yes.
Pen, if we could schedule him in for that? And at this time, uh, Mr. Kellid, if you would do the swearing in for, uh, Colin from St. Joseph's School.
Glad to do that, sir.
Thank you.
Got an outstanding young man here from St. Joseph's. Colin, you want to stand up? Want to appear with me, if you will? I'm going to have you repeat after me, okay? If you want to raise your right hand, I'll swear you in officially, okay? I, Colin Atkins.
I, Colin Atkins.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will uphold.
That I will uphold.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the.
The Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
The Constitution of West Virginia.
I will work hard.
That I will work hard.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
To fulfill the responsibilities.
Of the office.
The office.
Of honorary commissioner.
Honorary commissioner.
Which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, now, before you sit down, if you would, look, you look very shy and bashful, you know? But that's all right. I want you to not be nervous, okay? Uh, we're, we're just old country bumpkins like everybody else in this world, okay? So, but we want you to tell us about your future and what you're doing at school and where you hope to go. And most of the kids at St. Joe always tell us what school you go to next once you leave from St. Joe.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I'm Colin Atkins. I'm thirteen years old. I go to St. Joseph's School right now, and I'm going to be going to Washington High School next year. And I hope to be in A P classes because I want to attend New York State University. I want to attend N Y U for college because I want to do a major in dramatic arts.
Cool. I don't know, now you're going down to Jefferson County. I don't know about that. We could've sworn him or not. Since you're, since you're still in Berkeley County, we're going to let that go. I'm just teasing. Thank you. Appreciate it. Hey, if you have any questions at all, feel free to interrupt or add something to our conversation. Get this guy right here on the shoulder. Get your, get our attention, right? Thank you. Guess I should have.
Vance placement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
I'm going to take a picture.
Yeah, we'll get it, sir. All right. And we're, we're right on the money here, Sheriff. Ten o'clock, you're up, sir. Wanted to have Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Appreciate you having me this morning. Think we have four, four different items on the agenda to go over. Um, the first one is dealing with our recruitment program. Uh, it's something I believe, uh, county administrator's been reviewing. Um, it's a, um, a sign-on bonus that we hope to, to implement with our new, new hires moving forward. Uh, as you well know, we, we just went through a hiring process, and, um, right now, we're standing at, uh, we have three remaining, uh, candidates, and that's prior to the background and psychological. So I'm hopeful that all three will pan out and we can get them hired because we're sitting right now, uh, we're down six, we're down eight, as far as our lot. So, uh, but this, this agreement is, uh, will be made, uh, between the Berkeley County Sheriff and the employee. Do y'all have a copy of the form?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I won't read completely through it, but we, we broke it down into two, two separate payments of five thousand dollars. The first regularly scheduled payroll, uh, as a full-time employee would be the first five thousand. The first regularly scheduled payroll after one year of service would be the second five thousand. It'd be a total of a ten thousand dollar signing bonus for, for future, um, candidates. And, uh, I'm just asking that you guys would accept that and.
Yeah, Sheriff, we're going to do every one of your requests here this morning. We'll go have a separate motion for each one.
Okay.
Uh, you know, I appreciate you having, you've created this, the policy to address this. And I know that Mr. Wine and Mr. Winebrenner have both vetted, I think.
Well, it's legal.
Yeah. I think everybody's had a look at it.
Yes, sir.
It's just, it's another opportunity to give you, um, the tools that you need to be able to recruit, uh, in a very difficult job these days. So, um, everybody understands that it's a five thousand dollars at the, at the, his first pay. And at the end of his first year, he will receive the second ten thou, or second five thousand. And if he does not complete the two-year term, then those monies are to be returned.
Yes, there's, there's, there's stipulation there about reaching that two-year mark, and if not, they, they pay back the, the funds that they received. I'm sorry I didn't, I mentioned that. I also add that every other agency around is, has their signing bonuses. We're kind of in competition with that.
Yeah, there's a billboard on Route forty-five for a lot of the county.
Yes, sir. We've noticed that.
You're under very competitive stress there.
One thing we've discussed is our, moving forward in our recruitment process is doing those type things, trying to get some, the word out maybe better than we have. I'm not criticizing anything we've done in the past, but we're going to try to do some better recruiting in that area because we only, we only received seventeen applicants out of this last hiring process, and we're down to, down to three. So hopefully they make it through.
All right. Need a motion to approve the, uh, Sheriff's Department Recruitment Program.
I would like to make that motion.
Properly move?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you. Sheriff, the reclassification of civilian staff?
Yes, this is a, um, I believe you guys have a copy of the, um, uh, request, and, um, it'd be effective April twenty, April first, twenty twenty-four. The following reclassified, uh, Berkeley County Sheriff's Department civilian positions are requested, which have been confirmed by the county administrator. All of our front staff, uh, assistant, administrative assistant, records technician. Um, with this reclassification, there will be no lead or supervisor position in the front office. Number two, Marsha Kelly, financial specialist. Number three, Brandy Sullivan, office administrator. Number four, Jason Scales, uh, special operations support specialist. And five is, uh, Bob Shaw and Shania Orr, our process service, both part-time, and no change from the current classification.
Any salary change with this?
There's, there's no salary changes.
Mr. Vice President of the Department of Labor, one of the things that the sheriff and his administrative team did, along with identifying the, the new position names and working on the actual job description, was to get them in the proper salary classification. So this places them in the right scales and identifies each one of them for the, the current workload and the, the job definitions that they have with this administration.
They currently have a job description identified for?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Need a motion to, uh, to approve the reclassification of civilian staff slash salary changes.
No move.
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, and the purchase of replacement pistols, Sheriff?
Um, this, um, you all have a copy of this from Lieutenant Christian. Um, this is, um, purchase of replacement pistols, uh, for the previous deputy sheriffs. This is a purchase of replacement pistol for the previous deputy sheriff's retirement awards. When, when a deputy honorably retires from the department, it's customary by state code that we reward them their, their service weapon. And there's a list here of, one, two, three, six individuals from Chief Deputy Scott Wilson, Captain Stearman, Captain Johnson, Captain Gardner, Garner, Sergeant C. Thompson, and Sergeant Boils. All these retired prior to my appointment to this position. But when we award these, there's a cost attached to that, which I think historically, you guys have reimbursed us for, and that costs is $400 per firearm. The total cost to replace would be $2,400 for these service weapons.
Mr. President, or Vice President, for purposes of conversation, you, in order to do this, if you so choose, you have a declaration, a surplus declaration at your next page. Is that the motion to declare those?
Yes, sir.
Particular units surplus?
Yes. And that, these funds will be rolled back into our firearms program.
Well, I mean, I'm glad that the state law provides it, but that's also the right thing to do, whether state law requires it or not.
Yes, sir.
Guys carry those weapons for at least 20 years and nice, take them home with them.
Absolutely.
Okay, so a motion to accept the declaration of surplus for, and I'm not going to go down through all these serial numbers on those weapons, but as the sheriff just described.
So move.
And properly move and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you.
One, one more item. It's another, I think you all have a copy of this one, too. It's the surplus firearms. We have three rifles identified on this. They're all 308s, and these firearm rifles were previously assigned to the SWAT team for a program that we no longer use them for. We've gotten three bids for these weapons, declared them a surplus, and we would like to be authorized to sell them to the highest bidder, which came in and raised guns at a price of $2,900. I think we attached all three bids to this.
Yes, sir.
Or we're just asking for authorization to sell those and also roll those funds back into our firearms program.
Yeah, we also have received from Green Monster and Peacemaker.
Yes.
Okay. Motion to approve the request of sale of the three 08s, the raised guns in the amount of $2,900.
So move.
Properly move and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as have it. Thank you very much, sir. Anything else?
I think that's it for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go. That 308's a nice rifle. I've got one myself. Nice one. Thank you for your time, guys, ladies.
While Randy's not here, did you want to go ahead and take a break and get a picture? Okay, we'll go, we'll take a few-minute break so we can get a picture with our.
I know that Berkeley County needs another recreational center, so, because right now they have two. They have one in Inwood and they have one in Martinsburg, and then they also have the Boys and Girls Club down the street. But I feel like they need another recreational center for, like, the kids to have opportunity to learn, to be a community, and so, like, basically, the kids could have mentors to, like, have them not fall down the wrong path, and they could be successful. And then the recreational center could have lots of activities. Doesn't just have to be sports, it could be, like, swimming, it could be camps, it could be theatrical stuff, it could be, like, they could also have fundraisers for money, and then it could be a low-income, like, low-cost for people who might not be able to afford, like, a high, like, a high price. It could be lower, and they could have some, like, they could have some, like, scholarships for people so then, then they wouldn't have to pay as much. And then they could also have, for the adults, they could have, like, aqua aerobics in the pool, and then they could also have, like, a fitness gym for the adults. So while the kids are, like, hanging out and learning all the different social stuff, then the adults could be, like, working too.
Thank you, Colin. That's, that's very well planned, very well thought out. This gentleman here spent 45 years as a director of Parks and Recs, I'm sure, he, had really got his attention.
I didn't live, I didn't think I'd live to see one recreation center in Berkeley County. We have two now, so, but we need one in North Berkeley County next.
But what he says sounds a lot like something we're talking about.
Indoor aquatic center, yeah.
Well, the corporation we're talking with.
Yeah.
By him, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, and I like the fact that, that folks who possibly couldn't afford to maybe to go there, that would have an opportunity for scholarships, so that's pretty cool. I like, I like your thoughts.
Thank you.
Yeah, the park system does get donations throughout the year, and they do use that money for scholarships for kids that can't afford to play, participate in certain classes and all, so we need more donors to it. But there is that, that is in, that is in place to do that, so, for kids that can't afford, so. Well, Colin, come on down here and let's get a, let's get a picture.
The price of the study is $6,825 from J and H Consulting, who's been doing our plans, as far as our emergency operations plans, our flow studies, such for many years. Recently, though, I believe, have obtained some grant funding, will reimburse us for it. It is a reimbursement grant, so we have to pay the money upfront. This was built into our current capital budget, our current fiscal year capital budget. We did have money allocated for this, I believe that was approved in the budget. But the good thing is, we will get that money back at the end of it, get it completed, and get reimbursed for that, so.
How often are we supposed to do this?
It's recommended every five years.
Imagine it's that cheap, because I can't imagine the headaches of trying to track all that stuff.
So what they do is, they actually put people at critical points. I think there's three different points on the interstate.
Yeah, I noticed that in your thing.
Yeah, and I think.
And they do what then?
They watch, they watch the trucks going by, so as far as.
They look at placards on the trucks and stuff like that?
Yeah, so hazardous material has to be placarded, so they're just counting it and are recording this. Now with the railway, they request documents from the rail company. Rail companies are, they're not forthcoming with information, but.
Assuming, Winchester and Western as well, right?
Yes, so through this, through this agreement, and the way we request those documents, they pretty much have to send us the documents to give us basically the consist, I guess, of what's on these rates, what kind of commodity. It does help us prepare.
It absolutely does, and, you know, the rail has really become of interest over probably more so probably in the last 10 years, with all the major accidents throughout the country, a lot more attention is being paid to that. It allows our hazmat team to get the equipment that they need, and through different avenues of grants and whatnot, but also to prepare for the training of what that might look like. So it's something that really, it's an eye-opener, if you're not familiar with what goes through our county on the rail and the road at the end of the day.
I'm wondering, what made you select these four sites? Interstate 81, three of them, and then State Route 9, near the VA, I mean, what happens to Route 45 and, you know?
We picked a site going east and west, and then going to the center of the county, 81, based on where we would see most of the truck traffic. So typically, we would see more on Route 9 east than we would on 45 east going through Shepherdstown.
Other than gas delivery trucks and that kind of stuff?
Right, right.
Okay, there you go, Ann.
That's it, the agreement is basically, is the same agreement, this is the third time, I believe, entered into this agreement since I've been with the county, so, pretty much the same agreement. It is, the agreement itself is five pages.
Yes, sir, I need a motion to approve the commodity flow study pending legal approval.
I'll make that motion.
Very good, properly moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, as have, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, next up, Mr. Weinbrenner, the approval of the agreement for state EMS funds.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So the agreement before you is two separate agreements, one between the city of Martinsburg and the county, and one between the ambulance authority and the county. And that is for dispersment of the salary enhancement funds that were approved by the governor last year, that was directed towards EMS agencies in the state. Those funds are being given to agencies to supplement their salaries in multiple ways that they see fit, but it was distributed to all county commissions as a pass-through, and as part of that pass-through, we are liable for the reporting. So we've met with the city of Martinsburg, we've met with the ambulance authority, we've discussed the reporting requirements, they've agreed to report back through us, so that we can make sure that that's given to the state for accountability to these funds. And this agreement in front of you outlines that 75% of the money is going to the ambulance authority, 25% is going to Martinsburg. That is based on their 2023 calendar year call volume directed by the state, split those accordingly.
Ted, I know we certainly can't speak for the city, but with our ambulance authority, how will those funds be used, you know?
I know that about $18,000 of that is going to be used to go towards the mental health initiatives that the ambulance authority has taken for their providers, they're developing crisis response teams. I know in talks with Director Costello, I think it would be in this morning, they have a plan to use, they're using it for salaries as directed. I'm not 100% sure if they're applying it to raises or to like retention bonuses, but it's going to be used all for salary.
I mean, my only concern about that whatsoever is, I'm not sure that those monies are etched into the state budget, so.
There's no expectation that this is going to be a recurring fund.
Right.
This appears to be.
That's my concern.
We're going to give raises, and then they could be taken away from them.
Yeah, and that's.
At some point, if the state doesn't fund this.
This money, once distributed to the ambulance authority board, will be upon them.
And did I understand that it's 2%? I thought it was like based on 2% of their regular, not often, am I not?
No, um, no, the, so the agreement was simply set to be distributed to the EMS agencies in the county based on their call response.
I'm saying, who sets the rate that they get, the increase?
That would be the board of the ambulance authority.
Based equally, spread across the number of employees?
Again, so we contacted the Department of Emergency Medical Services at the state level, and it is extremely broad in how you can choose to use it. Some agencies across the state are using it as retention bonuses, some agencies across the state are using it to attract and recruit new employees with sign-on initiatives, as long as it is being used for compensation to personnel, that's what they're, that's what the state authority does. Some of the reporting that we have to do is, we have to provide back to the state the personnel it's being used on, because the state is very concerned about double-dipping across multiple agencies. They only want this money applied to one person, so if the ambulance authority has a part-timer, their agencies receive this money, they can only receive money from one agency.
There's no limit as far as you know?
It is at the discretion.
I'd say that's the only thing bothers me, is if they don't fund it.
I know in conversations with both entities, they're treating this as if it's a one-time, they don't.
Well, they did take it out of surplus, instead of, they were initially going to do it out of surplus, and they did put it as in the budget, so that was the good news. But the hope that it'll be in there every year after, but.
Any other questions? Or to accept the motion?
I say move.
Well, you're motioning, it takes two motions or one motion?
Oh, just one.
One. I'll second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, as have, thank you, Ted. And next will be an update on the COVID policy.
Yes, in front of you, you have a draft of, basically releases the previous COVID policies that were issued during the public health emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic, which was declared. On May 11th of 2023, that public health emergency declaration was allowed to expire. About a year ago, the CDC issued guidance which ended the five-day isolation period for exposures, and then just two weeks ago, the CDC officially released their guidance that rolled COVID into the same category as RSV and influenza, which basically puts it in the same criteria as all other respiratory viruses, guidelines. So there is no more specific policy from the CDC on how to handle COVID-19 anymore, so the county no longer needs to have policy specific to COVID-19. Off the action of COVID-19, no differently than we would with an employee. So the recommendation for this policy would be to suspend all previous policies that have been issued as employee attendants, that were issued as a result of the COVID-19 for.
And we get to wait for the next one?
God, I hope not.
It's coming, I don't know when, but it's coming.
Last one took a very long time.
Yes, it did, and the next one could be worse.
I'm like Ted, we were kind of in the trenches on that one.
Yeah, living in fire in EMS during 2020 was a very.
Okay, motion to terminate the COVID-19 guidelines.
I'll make a motion, terminate COVID-19 guidelines.
Properly moved, need a second?
Second.
I'll move and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye as have, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ted.
Gary?
Sure.
We're about 20 minutes out, do you want to go ahead and cover some of the?
We sure can.
Other stuff moving forward?
Sure can.
You know, just want to go down the litter vacuum?
We can. So as the commission is aware, last Thursday, you opened bids for a litter vacuum to support your roadside litter efforts. One other point to note with that is, you have a donation from Berkeley Community Pride in almost that exact amount, it's a couple dollars off, but you had one vendor that did respond, we had Mike Lang look at this, since he's the one that demoed it and was involved from the beginning. The Infrastructure Solutions Group does meet the specifications required, they are from Mechanicsville, Virginia, the total amount of their bid is $27,820, and we're recommending that the commission approve the purchase, and we apply the donated funds, and we get ready for spring and clean up the roads.
This thing on a trailer?
It is, it's on a trailer, pulled behind the truck, it has a Kevlar bag that goes in a hopper, so when it vacuums, this stuff shoots into that Kevlar bag that in turn gets removed, set in the back of the truck, and ultimately emptied, still faster, so they tell me, but it's not, you'd think, kind of like mulching and stuff, you'd throw the tree and it shoots it into the truck, but it doesn't work that way, it ends up into a bag, big bag, I think it's, I don't know how many.
What's the limit on how much, I mean, pick up beer cans and beer bottles?
Mike told me that they personally picked up a two-liter bottle that was about half full, and it sucked it right up in there like nobody's business. So they felt like the increase in production was almost 75%, how much faster they could go with this thing along the road.
They have a warranty on it?
You know, it's one year on some mechanical stuff, but it, they're neat.
Is it four-inch line?
I want to say it was four or five HD.
Yeah.
It's big, big flexible, he sent you the video, if you watched it, there was a YouTube video that came around on it that floated around, we actually, they actually got to use it and handle it.
Okay, where does it, does it go to the landfill then, everything? Or does it get separated from recycling?
So it depends on what they're picking up, right? They do that physically now. It just wouldn't walk along, or it'd only get plastic, I mean, if it's going to pick up paper, it's all going to end up in there. They're just not picking it with their tentacles or their stickers, they're just vacuuming.
Well, there'll be other people there to pick up stuff.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, need a motion to accept the bid recommendation for the litter vacuum?
Still move.
Second.
Properly moved and second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as have, thank you. And the bid recommendation for the furniture, for the assessor.
As the commission is aware, again, last week, you opened bids for two furniture packages, one was for the newly renovated assessor space, if you haven't been downstairs, you should go, it's getting close to completion, as well as the 90% of the county clerk space downstairs that's completed. As we've moved offices around, part of the budget of the project was to replace the furniture, to get them in current furniture, designed for the current workload in the offices, and they look really, really nice. In this bid package, you received three bidders, Guernsey, total bid was $144,351.07. The other was Capital Business Interiors, $209,900. And lastly, Labor's, which was $142,458.67. They've been reviewed. The low bidder did meet specifications, so we're recommending that the commission approve Labor's, again, in the amount of $142,458.67.
Is there any furniture they're reusing?
No, sir. The all-new uniform and the furniture that they have will be surplus sales as soon as we get them. They're bringing some of their chairs, but.
Yeah, I was always worried.
Furniture we've purchased previously, did it come from?
Labor's has supplied as well as Guernsey. I'm not sure we bought much from Capital Business.
And everybody, everybody's happy with what we received.
We are, and, and as you'll see, you're, you're just $2,000 difference in a $140,000 proposal, so.
Okay, pretty competitive.
Pretty competitive, yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we approve the low bid from Labor's for $142,459.67.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, we'll go take a few minute break until 11, when the rest of our elected.
All right, we're back in session. And it's a review with our electeds and department heads for the 2425 fiscal year budget. And it was, got quite a list to go down, so just bear with me on some of this. We'll start out with the county commission budget. Now, requested was $2,021,815. The amount allotted is $1,991,992. And that's a difference, a negative difference of $29,828. County clerk requested $998,802. He was awarded $998,802. You good with that, sir?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. Circuit clerk, $1,252,268. And you were granted that amount. Are you happy?[369.21][369.21](Laughter) You always have a smile, you do. Thank you. Sheriff's tax office, $821,890. And that was the amount that was allotted to that sheriff's tax office. Right, sir? Prosecuting attorney, $2,848,499. And that was the amount budgeted for that office. Very good. Yes, sir. You're welcome. The assessor, I had requested $1,061,140. And that was the amount funded to the assessor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Larry, thank you. Statewide computer network, that was $150,000. Sheriff's tax processing, $222,000. And that was the amount that was allotted. Okay, fiduciary, $287,493. Will, you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you. I don't see Mikey Withrow, but the agricultural agent is $128,290. And that was the amount requested. County clerk elections, $788,552. That is the amount that was requested also. Just for my own question, next year is not an election year. Would that amount be requested in your office?
The general election will be next year.
Well, okay, then the year after, on an off-year election? So, so this takes care of your poll workers and stuff like that? So, we would not see that in an off-year election?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Magistrate court, $75,000. And that was the amount budgeted. Circuit court security, Mr. Lang at $1,771,172. And that was totally funded at your request? Yes, sir. Custodial building maintenance, $1,065,812. I don't see Jack, he must be out working on a-
Working on lights.
-project. Okay. But that was fully funded at that request. Civil service was $15,750, which was fully funded. Courthouse account, $3,756,000. That courthouse account was fully funded also. Other buildings, which is our debt service, was requested at $4,800,000. It was actually cut $100,000 down to $4,700,000. IT, a request of $2,839,346. It was actually $45,000 less was granted at $2,794,346. Region nine, $114,752.
That's required, that's a required amount.
Yes, sir. The museum commission had requested $149,200. $25,000 was granted, and that was mostly for architectural work. Main Street Martinsburg was, requested $40,000. And $9,000 was granted, that's $31,000 less than requested. Airport requested $300,000. $170,000 was funded. That's $130,000 less than requested. Building inspections, Brian, you had requested $815,296. And you were fully funded?
He's on inspection.
Brian's out, okay.
Jack's back. They funded you, Jack.[642.66][642.66](Laughter)
Okay, planning and zoning was $354,507. And it was fully funded. Engineering, $546,932, which was fully funded. There was, there was actually, the contingency fund is at $209,180. Law enforcement, sheriff, you had requested $7,965,38. And you were fully funded at that amount. Service of process, which is $633,354. And that was fully funded as well. The regional jail fee is budgeted at $2,350,000. And that's what we've put into budget there.
Can I make a note to that?
Sure.
I just wanted to say, I hope that everyone appreciates that figure because if it weren't for home confinement and the day report center, we'd be spending eight to nine million dollars a year on the regional jail fees, so. And the state had actually proposed a 33% increase at one time for this next year. And that got killed, thank goodness. So, our day report center and what they do in home confinement deserves a lot of credit. It frees up this money so that we can fund all of our departments in this county, and we greatly appreciate it.
And also would show some appreciation to the judicial center. If it were not for the prosecutor cooperation and the magistrate cooperation, I think Katie put it very well, one time that we're putting people in jail that we're afraid of and not particularly mad at. But all the programs that we have also have accountability. So, it's, it works very well for, for all of us. Home confinement is at $701,000 was their request, and that's what was funded at $701,542. Deputy reserves requested $5,000. They were funded at $5,000. Emergency services, which includes our emergency management and our Brookhead County Fire, And they were fully funded at the amount requested. Communications, they requested $600,000. They were granted $500,000. So, they, they were at $100,000 less than they actually requested. Animal control was $452,018. It was fully funded at that amount. Central garage, $359,494, fully funded. Eastern panel conservation, they requested $10,000. They were granted $5,000. Children's Home Society requested $5,000. They were fully funded at $5,000. Day report center requested $4,025,373. They were fully funded at that amount. Community alternatives to violence, they were, requested $20,000. They were funded at $10,000. Eastern panel empowerment center made no request. The health department made a request for $100,000. They were approved for $80,000. Mental health hygiene transports at $403,688. That was fully funded at that amount. Recovery resources at $591,000. They were fully funded at $591,685. Solid waste recycling, they had requested $175,000. They were not granted that in the budget. However, you know, they had a law change this year that we think is going to help them immensely. And that's kind of what we're banking on. So, you know, if we need to go back into contingency to help them, we would take a look at that later on. But I'm hoping with this new law change that, that they will be okay. Solid waste litter control, they had requested $15,000. They were granted $10,000. Litter control was funded at $2,000 of their request. It was fully funded at $2,000. Hotel motel is budgeted at $505, obviously fully funded. Parks and rec, they requested $190,000. They were funded at $100,000. Parks and rec capital funds, they requested $89,938. Their capital expenditures were not approved. Martinsburg School of Rock requested $50,000. They were granted $5,000. Polity Theater, they requested $180,000. They were not funded at that, at that request. They were at zero. Boys' and girls' club in the Panhandle, $54,000 request, $10,000 granted. Martinsburg Roundhouse, $36,452. And they were granted $36,452. Historic Morgan Cabin requested $6,442. They were granted $3,221. Mountain State Apple Harvest Festival requested $5,000. They were not funded any, any funds at all. Historic Landmark Commission, they requested $7,300. They were funded $7,300. Convention and visitor bureau, the hotel motel tax, you know, which was basically a pass-through, at $505,000, they were, they were funded. The library commission, once again by statute, $1,186,825 is the amount funded. Mills on Wheels requested $5,000. They were granted $5,000. Sea Cap Loaves and Fishes, they requested $5,000. They were granted $5,000. Hospice requested $2,500. They were funded at $1,500. Martinsburg Initiative requested $5,000. They were not, they were not funded on any amount. Human Resource Akasa, they requested $20,000. They were funded at $5,000. Senior Services, they requested $70,000. We funded them at $25,000. Transit Authority requested $150,000. They were funded at $75,000. General Government, which is the, the county commission payments on the vehicles, requested $750,000 for that, so we can keep our fleets up and about. And that was granted at $750,000. The total general budget fund for 2425 is $51,44,496. Everybody still there but Jack?
Mr. Brady may want to mention that no personnel requests to fund.
Yes, and also, I discussed this earlier with the chief deputy. We had, we had several requests for personnel, and there, there will be no request for additional personnel in this year's budget. I hope that everybody in every agency is happy with your allotments. You basically, for the most part, got everything that you had asked for, everything you budgeted for. And we, we trust the work that you do. And you, you do a lot of good work in this, in this county. And a lot of people depend on what you do, not, not just us. A lot of people outside these doors depend on the services that you provide and the assistance that you're able to give them. And, you know, we're, we're pleased with your all's performance. You'll do an excellent job for, for the Brookhead County residents, and that's, that's why we're here. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you staff for what they do. And at this moment, I need to accept a motion to accept the budget for 2425.
Well, ask them if they have any comments.
Adopt the budget.
Any comments?
Have any comments from?
Any comments from, from the staff or electeds?
Thank you all very much for doing this.
This is only my second year sitting on this side of the podium. I sat on that side of the podium for 45 years. And last year was a breeze. I mean, we got done in an hour, and we were ready to go. And this year, it was a very intense and very difficult struggle for us to figure out how to balance this budget.
They couldn't do it till I showed up.[1255.75][1255.75](Laughter)
That's true.
Once Barnard got back, things went a little better. But, but I want to say, my dad was a sheriff at one time. And something that I know from many years is that our first obligation as a commission is to fund our elected officials and their staff. And we worked really hard to do that, so. And I hope we continue that. But I want you to know also, we are working really hard with our legislature. We're working as hard as we can to find and identify any source of budgetary monies we can obtain to make this process easier for us. And we know the one great need we have here is public safety employees. And we're working really hard to try to make that happen with our legislatures. And, and let's hope that it does. And specifically, I'm talking about the 1% sales tax would be the answer to most of our prayers. But we, as Eddie said, we, we appreciate the job that you all do. And, and I want you to know, you know, we, we have your backs, and we're trying to do our best, so.
Thank you, Sheriff.
The other thing I want to say is how much we appreciate our administrative staff and what they went through.
Thanks, Dean.
I'm telling you, it's-
It was a difficult year for us. We struggled immensely. And our staff carried us through this, and we appreciate their effort tremendously.
It's, uh, it's, it's been a, quite a process. While I walk in, I see Gary rubbing his head, I know.[1367.21][1367.21](Laughter) I don't think he would normally be bald, okay?[1372.12][1372.12](Laughter) But he, he rubs his head, and I think, oh, something, something's not working quite right here. But, but yeah, and, and the process that they're able to lay it out in front of us and explain to us, you know, projection of revenues, you know, they, they're able to look back. This is not a guess. This is a very intelligent process that, that they're able to look at trends to get to where you need to be and, and where the, the tax dollars are. You know, we had to wait on the assessor's numbers, you know, to come in before we could really figure out where we were, where the revenues were. So, yeah. Enough said on that. Thanks, thanks for everybody involved in this process.
Yes, and we really appreciate your judicious watching of your budgets and keeping the bottom line as low as you can because it helps everybody, let me tell you.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and you know, we have, we have, we have needs. We know that. And, you know, we weren't able to take care of every need that, that we had before us. But we, we do our very best, I can assure you that. Okay, so I, I need a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2425 budget in the amount of $51,44,496.
I would move to do that.
Mr. Vice President, it's $51,44,496, not $444,000. Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year budget for 2425 for $51,44,496.
Second?
I'll be moving the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Uh, I, yeah, we do have a need for executive session.
Personnel and real estate.
Personnel and real estate. Thank you.
Second?
Second.
...
All right, we're back in session. There'll be no action taken, any items from the public. There's nobody here from the public. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. Vice President, I just want to appreciate you taking over the meeting today. You did a good job.
Thanks, sir.
But that doesn't affect my motion to recess.
Very good. We are in recess.
We have lunch.